Is there a motion to come out of executive session?
No.
Second.
There's a second. Clerk, please take a roll.
Here.
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 Yes, I vote to come on executive session.
Yes.
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 Yes. Is there a motion to seal the minutes of executive session?
So moved, second.
Motion made in second. Clerk, please take a roll.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Is there a motion to adjourn? Second. I now call this meeting of the Cranston City Council to order. Clerk, please take a roll.
Here.
Present. Present.
Here.
Present.
Present. Present. Is there a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes of the last meeting?
So moved, second.
Made in second, any discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please take a roll.
Here.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. At this time, I would ask all persons to stand and pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any other public acknowledgements, commendations?
I have none.
Next part of the docket is public hearing. On the list, the sign-up list, we have Captain R.
Barber.
Barber. Captain? Oh, I'm sorry. I'm very sorry. I thought this was documented. This is undocumented. Any members of the public who like to speak on any documented item, please come forward, give your name and address for the record. And everybody's allowed to speak for four minutes, except for Mr. Anybody else from the public that can speak on any documented item?
We don't have the known.
Hearing none. The hearing section of this meeting is now closed. We have a resolution before us urging the General Assembly to place a referendum before the voters at the next general or special election to eliminate single-party mass lever voting by means of a single mark on the ballot. Is there a motion to suspend Rule 34B?
So moved.
Motion made in second. Any discussion?
Council President May?
Yes.
I don't know if it's Jermaine too, the motion, but the resolution in our packet's the wrong one.
You have the correct one. They're both in there because the other one is also coming in as the present.
Well, I only see the one from Councilman Botts and Councilman Favecchio, and on the docket, I see one from Council President.
Vice President.
And. It should be, but it's not. That's Councilman Favecchio.
Did you locate it, Councilman?
Still looking.
It's in the back of your packet?
Oh, it's in the back?
Oh, two on the back.
Where it belongs.
We're reading. Here it is.
Any discussion?
I'm motion to suspend the rules, correct?
Right. We had a motion to suspend the rules, and we had a second. We're in the discussion. Councilman Stikos.
I know that Councilman Botts had this resolution before. I'd like to just know if he supports suspending the rules, and I seem to have.
Councilman Stikos has a fourth one. Did you go down, Councilman Stikos?
Yes, no, I was asking a question of Councilman Botts.
Oh, you're Councilman Botts?
I'd be in favor of suspending the rules. I wouldn't be in favor of the resolution, but I'll be glad to suspend the rules so we can have a discussion about it.
Councilman Favecchio.
Thank you, Council President. Just a point of order. We have competing resolutions on this issue. I'm not sure.
There's only one resolution on this docket, so we don't have competing resolutions. And the resolution that's on this docket is to send a resolution to the General Assembly urging them to put a referendum statewide on a special election or a general election to eliminate the master ballot. That is the resolution that we're dealing with. Any discussion on this resolution?
Point of order, this is the Council President. We're discussing the motion to suspend the rules.
All right. Any other discussion concerning suspending the rules? Hearing none. Clerk, please take a roll.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
No. Yes. Is there a motion to approve this resolution?
Motion to approve.
Motion made in second. Any discussion? Councilman Asido.
Yes, Council President. The reason why I'm supporting this resolution is because on something that is so important to everybody, I don't feel that elected officials should be deciding whether there is a master ballot or there is not a master ballot, whether it's at the city level or the state level. This way here, it takes it out of the hands of the politicians and it puts it in the hands of the voters so that the voters can decide. After all, we are a land of laws that are made to help voters, and the voice of the people needs to be heard here. And by doing it this way, at least we'll get the people's voice here, thank you.
Councilman Farina.
I'm going to support this resolution because I feel, like Councilman Asido, that it takes the partisan politics out of the fight. The issue we're having today is it benefits or does not benefit one particular party or another. The people should decide something that basically party politics would play a role in determining the outcome of because Democrats may benefit by some arguments, Republicans may not benefit. So based on that, the people should decide how we move forward with this. Thank you.
Councilman Botts.
Thank you, Council President. I will be voting against this resolution for a number of reasons. To address the two points brought up by Councilman Asido and Council Vice President Farina, we elect officials at the General Assembly to legislate. They saw fit in 2012 to pass a voter ID law that, or 2010, for the 2012 election, to have a voter ID law. They've legislated on numerous election laws in the past. This is just one more election law that they can legislate on. I am opposed to a referendum. This is a same tactic that opponents of same-sex marriage use. They want to put it out for referendum for the people when it's perfectly okay for the General Assembly to be able to go up or down on this. This is nothing more than a stall tactic, in my opinion, to make sure that this resolution doesn't go forth and urge the General Assembly to vote on this prior to the 2014 election. And I can guarantee you that this isn't the same resolution that I put forth. This is what I would call, well, I'll just leave it at that. Thank you.
Councilman Akero.
Thank you, Council President. I'd just like to commend my colleague, Councilman Asido, for addressing this issue. I think this is a very important issue. It's an issue that needs to be decided by the voters. I believe in the last presidential election, a third of the voting population used a master lever. So it's something that many individuals turn to, and it's something I think that many individuals shouldn't address. I think we should leave it up to the voters. Also, just to make a point for my colleague, Councilman Favecchio, Councilman Botts' resolution was voted down, so it should not even appear on the docket. If it does appear, it should appear as new business being reintroduced. So I can't see how that even was part of the docket. Thank you, Council President.
Councilman Shannon Way.
Thank you, Council President. To use Councilman Botts' argument, this did go before the General Assembly already, and it didn't pass out of committee. So it already had its due process in the General Assembly. So you're saying the General Assembly should hear or hear the testimony, and they decided to keep it in committee. So it's a state issue. It's being handled by the state reps. I agree with you. Again, this is another point where I don't think you liked the decision that came out. So you didn't like the way the election results came out. I can understand where this is going. Thank you.
Councilwoman Lee.
I don't have, well, I think it's in the spirit of compromise. In the spirit of compromise, it's a good place to go. I think that the resolution makes sense and I'm for it. Thanks.
Councilman Botts.
Just to address a couple of issues. One, I did request that my particular resolution come before the full council. I thought it was that important where the full council should consider it. So I did resubmit it as a new resolution and asked that it be heard before the full council. The other thing is, I think the legislation was held for further study. I don't think it was voted up or down at the General Assembly. It could always be brought back by the Speaker, as we all know, and he decides it's important enough to do so, so.
Any other discussion? Councilman Favecchio.
Thank you, Council President. Just a couple of things. I think really what we're saying here, and what the sponsors are saying, is we don't want to take a stand on what our belief is on this, whether we think it's a good or a bad thing to have a master lever. This was a creature of legislation in the beginning. I don't think the voters voted on whether or not you had a master, a single lever. I think it was something, it's a logistical issue with regard to voting. We have, our legislature is debating same-sex marriage at this point, which was not put before the voters, and that issue was so controversial that it's before the United States Supreme Court this week. That didn't have, that doesn't have to go to the voters, yet we think that something about, whether you have one lever per party for voting, has to go before the voters. I think not. Councilman Botts and I had sponsored that resolution, which takes a stand against single-lever voting, saying that it's an archaic form of voting and it needs to change. Only 16 states still have that law, and it's being challenged in many of those 16. The other issue is with regard to resolutions, I think I had read the rules. I think resolutions tend to be more ceremonial than, they have the inability to pass an ordinance or to pass law. And under our parliamentary rules or under our council rules, anything that's largely ceremonial goes before the full council. So I'm not so sure that these type of resolutions should go before a committee. I'm not sure that there's a necessity to have them go before a committee, and they should be heard by the full council. Obviously against this.
Councilman Asido.
Through the Chair, Councilman Favecchio, I think that's why we suspended Rule 23. I think Rule 23 does set forth procedures for resolution going to committee, and when you suspend the rule, then you do it so you don't have to go to committee. That's number one. Number two, we are taking a stand, letting the people's voice be heard, and that is a stand, in any opinion. Number two, with the same-sex marriage, I think there's a group of us on this council who feel that that should get to referendum also. So just because the legislature doesn't do it, doesn't mean that, you know, you have members of this council that don't think that certain things are important. Referendums are important. You know, people have to make the choice. All right? And number four or five, whichever number I'm on, if you research the history of the master lever, come back and tell me which party started it. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
If I may just respond.
Yes, please, Councilman.
Thank you, Council President. It doesn't matter which party started it. I have no, that isn't the question. The question is whether it should be a voter initiative or whether the legislature can do it. And if the legislature started it, I don't see why they can't stop it. I don't think it needs to go before all the voters. I think it's just an expedient, it's expedient to certain people that feel that it helps them in voting, but I certainly am against it.
Any other discussion concerning? Hearing none. Clerk, please take a roll.
Councilwoman Lee. Yes. Councilwoman Stikos.
No.
Councilman Botts.
No.
Yes.
Councilman Asido.
Yes.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
Yes. Motion passes. Our reporter committees, Ordinance Committee.
Thank you, Council President. Resolution supportive turning on the lights at City Hall passed by Committee of the Senate. Detain a motion for passage.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion concerning turning lights on City Hall during council meetings? Mr. Cordy, you'd like to comment on this?
Thank you, Council President. I'll make this brief. First of all, on introduction of this resolution, we immediately took a look at this because we were unaware that the lights weren't on. What we found, and thank you for bringing that to our attention, what we found, they'd been out for over a decade. The wiring had rotted, somebody disconnected them, and that was the end of it. So we immediately started working on those, and by tomorrow night, they should be working. My other message is, next time, just give us a call. Doesn't take a resolution for us to get the lights back on.
I did, I did. I called, I emailed.
Okay, that's good for me to hear. Maybe I can talk with you afterwards to find out where you sent that.
Okay.
Any other discussion concerning turning on the lights? Hearing none. Clerk, please take a roll.
Councilwoman Lee. Yes. Councilwoman Stikos.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Next resolution, opposing act relating to labor moving relations, certified schoolteachers' binding arbitration. This passed committee, three yeas, two nays. Council President, entertain a motion.
Detain a motion.
Make a motion.
There's a second?
Second.
Under discussion? Councilman Botts.
Thank you, Council President. I introduced this ordinance primarily, as I discussed in committee, that what binding arbitration does is it takes accountability away from the elected officials and puts it in the hands of either one arbitrator or a party of three arbitrators that decides budgetary issues for the city or town in Rhode Island. And these arbitrators do not have to answer to a voter. They make decisions all on their own, and I believe it takes away from the democratic process involved that there should be accountability when you're voting on issues that could raise the taxes of the constituents in your city or town. I know there are other bargaining units out there that do have this, but I, you know, again, as I said before, a third wrong probably does not make a right, and I want, submitted this resolution to urge the General Assembly to vote against the various bills that have been submitted regarding binding arbitration, also contract continuation. Thank you, Council President.
Councilman Favecchio.
Thank you, Council President. I would echo Councilman Botts' sentiments on this. I think it takes away our ability to control the budget. If we allow arbitrators to make all the decisions in contracts, we're not going to really have any choice with what we do with the budget. We're going to be forced to maybe raise taxes on occasion when we don't have the ability to pay the increased costs. So I think it's definitely something that we need to urge the legislature to do, and I would join Councilman Botts and also Council President, I noted, in opposing, sending this resolution to the General Assembly.
Any other discussion? Make a comment. I was one of the co-sponsors of this legislation, and I echo what my two colleagues say. Binding arbitration for teachers, which is more than half the city budget, would be devastating to the taxpayers of this city. Therefore, I was one of the sponsors of that resolution. Hearing that, clerk, please take the roll.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
No.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Finance Committee, Councilman Stikos.
I think we had one more on the ordinance.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Councilman Akero, you have one more?
Thank you, Council President. Yes. Ordinance 2-13-02, ordinance amendment of Title 10, Chapter 32, the current city of Cranston, 2005, entitled Motor Vehicles in Traffic, West Scott Avenue, no parking decorant. Motion to approve.
Motion made second. Any discussion concerning this, Councilman Akero?
Thank you. This is my ordinance, and basically, two elderly people live on West Scott and concerned about traffic jam, making sure the ambulance can get to them. They're both in ill health, and they just want an avenue for that ambulance to access their house.
Any other discussion concerning this ordinance? Hearing none. Clerk, please take a roll.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Finance Committee, now call out Councilman Stikos for his committee reports.
Thank you. Just first, a couple of announcements. The next Finance Committee meeting will be Thursday, April 11th, and that, at that hearing, we will review the pension ordinances that are being proposed by the mayor. That's Thursday, April 11th.
At what time?
At 6:30. You meet at 6:00?
6:30.
Yeah, 6:30. At 6:30. Also, we'll be having budget hearings as a schedule that the clerk has of the budget hearings and what subjects will be heard on what night. Because of the pension issue, we're going to have to move what was scheduled for the 11th to another night, but other than that, the dates are set. And I think it would be helpful if people have questions that they know of already, if they maybe sent them in. Would they send them to you, Bob, or how would we do that to maybe make the hearings move a little quickly, more quickly? Councilman, I think that would be the best suggestion. They email me. In the past, it did go to your internal city auditor, and then he would come up with a list of questions, review them with me in preparation for the hearings. I don't know if you want to continue to do that. I'm not opposed to it, but if you rather, you could send it directly to me. Yeah, I think good suggestion that maybe people could send them both to you and to the council auditor, Roy Damianno, at the same time. That's fine. Okay. Thank you. All right, on to the business. We have a resolution authorizing real estate tax abatements as recommended by the tax assessor.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any discussion concerning tax abatements? Hearing none. Clerk, please take a roll.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Next is a resolution authorizing motor vehicle tax abatements as recommended by the tax assessor.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please take a roll.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Finally, we have the tax interest waivers, the approvals of tax interest waivers recommended by the city treasurer.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any discussion? Seeing none. Clerk, please take a roll.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Next on the docket, Councilman Asido, Public Works.
Thank you, Mr. President. This resolution came before the Public Works Committee and met with the approval.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made in second. Under discussion, Councilman Akero.
The intent of this resolution, Council President, to reduce the hazards on Monroe Avenue, hopefully reduce speeding and help the administration install some signage or other impairments to deal with the speeding on Monroe Avenue.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. Clerk. Yes. Mr. Cordy.
Thank you. I would just like to take a moment to give a little bit of the travel of how this resolution came about. Councilman Akero met with the traffic engineer and was given permission to do so back in February 6th of this year, discussed the situation, and the traffic engineer indicated to him at that time what he could and could not do, and told him he would put signs up and have put signs up, notifying them of the intersection that would be coming up. So therefore, very little need for the resolution. And secondly, in committee, it was agreed that we would take speed bumps out of this resolution. In the title, it still reads "speed bumps," and on the second page, it's still talking about signage, warning of the speed bump ahead.
Councilman Akero.
I believe in the Public Works Committee, it was agreed that speed bumps would be deleted, so any failure would have to look at the judge counsel or whoever drafted that, but it was an accord upon the Public Works Committee that the term "speed bump" would be deleted, which it has, from my understanding. Secondly, the resolution will just be a reminder to the administration that if the signage does not work, hopefully, there'll be a next step, so I think there is a need for this resolution, Council President.
Any other discussion? Make a quick comment. It's a resolution. It's not an ordinance. It doesn't have to be enforced completely. Therefore, if the city decides they don't want to put a speed bump there, they don't have to. Clerk, please take a roll.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Close Committee. Now, call upon Councilman Saralee for her committee report.
Just one second, let me get the sheet. We made out several payments. Do I have to list them all and state them all here in committee and in the council meeting?
Yeah, I think you should, for the record.
For the record, okay. Five thousand two hundred and seven dollars was paid to Evelyn Cruz and for vehicle damage. And Richmond Motors and Sales rental was, four hundred and thirty-one dollars was paid to Michelle Arujo. And Antonio Tamar and Magarda Montero were paid two thousand and sixty-five dollars for vehicle damage. Danielle Hogberg was paid twenty-five dollars for property damage. John Mead was paid fifty dollars for property damage. Charlotte Lawson was paid a hundred and ninety-four dollars for property damage. Stephanie Di Stefano was paid fifty dollars for property damage. It's a lot of, a lot of mailboxes there. Die Escarol Construction was paid one hundred and seventy-two dollars for vehicle damage. David Farah was paid fifty-three dollars for vehicle damage. Alan Torrigan was paid fifty dollars for property damage. Gina Bank, fifty more dollars for property damage. James Pryor was paid twenty-five dollars for property damage. And Anne and Jelly was paid three hundred and eighteen dollars for property damage. And then there are settlements paid by the solicitor's office of five thousand dollars for water damage to Daniel and Maria Maggiacomo.
Majacomo.
Majacomo, sorry. And then two thousand eight hundred dollars for vehicle damage to, how do you spell that?
Filioli.
Filioli and Romano and Progressive Insurance. And that is it.
Motion to approve is a block.
Second. Motion made to approve is a block and is a second. Any discussion on the motion?
Yes.
Councilman Asido.
Yes, to the chairwoman. On some of these that I'm guessing were mailboxes or whatnot, are we going back to see if it was a city vehicle or if it was a private plower? And if it was a private plower, would we hold them responsible for the payment?
I, I, I think we looked into that. I think if they're plowing the city's roads, I don't know.
Councilwoman, through the chair, we did, that came up in the meeting, we talked about the vendor on the road for each mailbox, and I believe someone from the city went out to validate that it was caused by our plows.
Our, our trucks, okay.
Our city plows.
Because I didn't remember seeing anything about the vendors themselves.
There was actually, through the chair, there were two that we denied because we had to go back to the vendor to get the money.
Okay, thank you.
Through, Mr. President, through the chair.
Yes, Councilman Asido.
To the city solicitor, in fact, if we do have a private vendor doing work for the city, aren't they providing, I'm not saying it happened here, but they are providing some sort of certificate of insurance, and if they're liable, do we go after them, or do we hold their payment? Or common practice? Yes. Yes, to both. It is. Yes. Okay, thank you.
Councilman Stakos.
I think I made this point at the last council meeting, but this should say "notification of settled claims." These have already been settled. We don't have, the full council does not.
We don't.
Ratify these.
Yeah.
This is a done deal.
This is just a notification to everyone.
So when the agenda, when the docket is prepared, it should say "notification of settled claims." Thank you.
City clerk, did you take note of Mr. Stakos's comments?
Through the chair, I apologize, I was speaking to the council's, council on another matter. Would you please repeat the request or whatever it is that I was supposed to note?
This item, which is on the agenda every month, should say "notification of settled claims" because these claims are already settled. The council has no authority to approve them or disapprove them, or, it's just to notify people of what's happening.
I would defer to the council on that. I know they, the processes that they are paid prior to the council meeting and process these, whether or not the council no longer has authority or is required to approve it would be up to the solicitor.
Mr. President.
I'm going to ask our solicitor to give an explanation on this.
I believe the council does have to ratify them because it involves expenditure funds.
So it's a motion to ratify the action. Thank you.
Yes.
Through the chair, they were previously listed as ratification, and we received a request not to use that term, so it has to do with what terminology we're putting it on the docket with.
Yes, we can continue to split. Yes, continue.
Question, Mr. Kirshenbaum, who sits in on all the Claims Committee meetings?
Yes.
Do you agree that the council has to approve them? And if so, the, my understanding is the prior Claims Committee chairman was that once the committee made a decision, those claims were settled. So if what Mr. Quinlan says is correct, we need to change our procedure so that no settlement is made prior to a council vote.
Well, the problem is, we could talk about this at the next committee meeting, but there's a particular gap period at which point in time, under our law, the jurisdiction of the claim would switch from the council to the solicitor's office exclusively. So this procedure was put in place a number of years ago so that the city council could settle these cases in the first place. After a period of time, I believe it's forty-five days, under nine one forty-five, the claim under our charter becomes the province of the solicitor's office. That's why some of these claims are broken down as settled by, in the Claims Committee and settled by the solicitor. Pursuant to our charter, the solicitor, upon the advice of the mayor, could settle any claim pending before the city. So cases that are traditionally litigation are settled by the solicitor's office through the claims budget that has already been allocated by the council.
Councilman Stakos.
Yeah, but that isn't, that isn't my point. My point is that, and I could be wrong about this, but my point is that the, my understanding is that once the Claims Committee says we're paying fifty dollars for the mailbox.
We send out the check in a release.
Right, before the council votes.
Correct.
So we have, either, the council shouldn't be ratifying because it's a phony ratification, or we need to, what are we going to do, go get the fifty dollars back?
No, I mean, I consider it settled.
Right, so either that needs to change, or we need to hold the check until the council votes.
Councilman Sehira, to the council president, to the solicitor, would you consider this committee a standalone committee, kind of like security services?
Yes.
Where we make some decisions that don't need council ratification, only lic, lic or license?
What happened historically with this committee is that it was a insurance commission, and it had several different constituents in it. It had appointments from the mayor, it had some people from the administration, and it had some council people. So some things that were traditionally happening during the committee were not subject to council approval because this was a, similar to an insurance adjusting committee rather than a council vote. And that's the way it's always been looked at. And some of these procedures haven't been translated forward to reflect that this is actually a vote. You know, it would, it would seem to me impractical to have each claim brought before the council because, of course, these claims are discussed in executive session. And to have a discussion of each and every claim, if someone wanted to know why they were voting on a particular issue, doesn't make sense on the floor because we wouldn't want to give away our particular litigation strategy or the merits or weaknesses of a particular claim. In that instance, the Claims Committee is really serving in the fiduciary capacity of the city and trying to protect the city from financial implications, not rather to pass an ordinance which is to be debated. So the functions are very different. It's a holdover from the old Insurance Risk Commission, and I see it as being settled at the time of the committee.
Counsel.
It takes, it takes the, I'm sorry, Mary, it takes the political aspect out of the settling of claims because it does not have to be voted on by the full council.
Counselman Asido, you have a question?
No, I was just going to say to my colleague that I don't sit on claims, and the fact that you have the authority to pay these and they're paying, that's fine. But it's a matter of, we're just ratifying them and making them part of the public record in front of the full council, and I really don't have a problem just saying, you know, that these are the claims that paid and this is what it is. So if I have a question, I can ask the Claims Chairwoman, you know, why and where, but I think that it's written to the record and it's fine. You know, whether we're ratifying the action or just having it on the docket to see if there's any questions, either way, it's fine with me, but.
Any other discussions? My only comment is, there's not much difference between approve and ratify. We could turn it over to attorneys, but for a hundred and twenty-five dollars an hour, I don't want to see attorney paying a fifty dollar mailbox claim. So it should stay where it is.
No.
Motion made in second. Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilwoman Lee.
Yes.
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 Through the chair?
Yes.
Just for clarification, shall I change that to "report of settled claims"? Is that agreeable?
It sounds like a good compromise word. Yes, please, please do that.
Thank you.
Public hearings. Does any member of the public would like to speak on any undocketed item? I do have a list, so Captain Barber, I believe you're the first one on the list.
I understand, does this work for Captain Abanro?
Abanro, there you go.
Yes, I'm going to give that to you. Captain Robert Barber retired. I retired with a conventional pension with the city of Cranston. What I'm going to discuss tonight, I understand I'm allowed some more time if I am here to give the perspective of a group of people rather than just four minutes.
You're speaking for a group of people, Captain?
Well, there are ten or fifteen people that hold the same point of view that I do that we have, they know I'm here, and they wish me to present that, that perspective.
Are they here with you?
Not all of them, no.
Okay, well, show of hands, who is with Captain Barber? One, two, three. Okay, I'll give you additional minutes, Captain.
Thank you. What I'm going, what I'm going to address is what you've discussed in executive session. And the reason I'm choosing tonight is that everyone eventually is going to have to vote on these ordinances. And you mentioned the Finance Committee on the 11th having a meeting to discuss the numbers. I think we should take in consideration the numbers or the money that it's going to cost the city to defend the litigation if and when these illegal ordinances are passed. Several points I'm going to make. When it comes to the pensions, this is not a class action. Each retiree retired with their own individual contract. Each individual must decide whether they're going to open their contract or not. Even though if fifty-one percent of the retirees agree, this is not a majority rule. Each person will have to choose to give up their rights. My pension is my personal property. The courts have decided my contract is my personal property. I have a collective bargaining agreement, which is a contract, which is binding. Merriam-Webster defines a contract as a binding agreement between two or more persons or parties, especially one legally enforceable. It has already been decided by courts, my personal property, and I cannot be denied my personal property without due process. The Fifth and Fourteenth Amendments of the Constitution of the United States say I cannot be denied life, liberty, or personal property without due process. I do not believe passing ordinances is due process. Any arbitrary alteration of my pension is a violation of my civil rights. There are numerous court cases supporting retirees and pensions. The general treasurer herself acknowledges the constitutional parameters of the collective bargaining agreement. I have contributed to my pension throughout my career. The city has consistently failed to fund the pension. The city has taken my money and money from the pension fund and spent it at their whim. Responsibility or accountability does not fall to the retirees. My money was misappropriated. The city has the ability to pay, raise taxes. In the eighties, Montalvo versus Taft, the court told the city, if the subcity doesn't fund the pension fund, raise taxes. Seventy-five cents per thousand would resolve this issue. I believe that's only a three-quarter of a percent raise when the city has the authority to raise taxes, four percent. Float bonds, make cuts within the city. The city has created this problem. I and the retirees have not. Although this year, the city can allocate ten million dollars for trees, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for open space, hire a new employee with all the benefits. In Cranston, this pension system I'm talking about, this is a closed system. This is not like Providence, which is an open system. The city has twenty years to get this out of critical status. Within twenty years, many of the retirees are going to be deceased. This will become a moot point. The state requires that the cities and towns prepare reports on funding improvement plans, not pension reduction plans. So far, the only plan the city that I've seen from the city is pension reduction. Twenty years to get it out of critical status. Why the rush to judgment? Most importantly, this is not my fault. I didn't create this mess. This is the time. This is the time. This is the time to point finger and lay blame. On the past elected officials, which this is their scourge, you pass these illegal ordinances, this will be your scourge. You are elected to protect our liberties and our way of life, but not to use your authority to deceive and exploit us. No one is held accountable here except the retirees, which is discriminatory. No one's held accountable for taking my pension money that I paid in for twenty-seven years and spent it. No one's being held accountable for the city not paying into the pension fund, still isn't fully funding the pension, and maliciously bleeding the pension dry. Everybody's pointing the finger and laying the blame on the retirees. Whether that be to beat or gain public support, the city's not taking any responsibility. We tried to fix this in nineteen seventy-two. We went to court. The court told the city, what you're doing is wrong. Told the city, you should faithfully fund the pension. Told the city, you should faithfully fund the pension, and also told the city, if you do not fund that pension, don't come back to this court in 30 years and tell me you have no money. People say, well, the private sector doesn't get this kind of benefits. This were the private sector, people would be going to jail. The private sector was making more money than the police over the years. I went for years without a contract and a raise when times were good and people were getting 4, 5, 6% raises, and when I did get a raise, it was 2.5%, 3%. What would the private sector do when their contract is violated? At the mayor's first meeting at Cranston East with the retirees, he stated the sewer fund was 100% funded. He said he had no choice but to fund it, 100%, because the city is under contract. He honors that contract, but doesn't want to honor the retirees' contract. So the message here I get is human waste is more important than humans. Nowhere in my contract does it state my benefits can be changed or altered. My benefits in my pension were earned. If this contract can be altered, then any contract can. Let's alter the sewer contract. I understand the city finished doing the block, something to like $12 million surplus. It has the ability to pay. This is not Central Falls. This is not Providence. And Providence isn't quite a done deal yet. Providence isn't a closed system. They're still working with their municipal pensions. The mayor wants me to open my contract. Once opened, everything is on the table. The entire contract would need to be renegotiated. All my benefits are at risk. And if more was taken away than what we're being told, I would have no recourse. I would be totally vulnerable at the city's mercy. And the mayor knows this, so we'll file a friendly lawsuit. What that would mean to me is that I opened my contract, I am now vulnerable, now we have to file a friendly lawsuit to protect the rest of my benefits in my contract. How do I know that's going to happen? They're trying to alter my contract now, so what makes that any more enforceable than this? Mayor got 1.5% raise this year, not sacrificing anything. Example is always more efficacious than precept. This is the city's challenge, not the retirees' challenge. City may try to prolong this in court, and I heard things like, "To billable owe me to death." Outlast retirees financially. With taxpayer money, with my money, I have to pay my taxes already. It's got to get me to open my contract. At the Cranston East meeting with the mayor, he did not and still does not have a reliable answer. What happens in the future if I open my contract? He said he can't answer to what might happen in the future or what someone else might do because he knows they can and they will. As I stated a moment ago, legislative immunity. There are possible personal, individual liability for everyone here under that statute. And if and when my contract is violated and when I win, there'll be reimbursement of all legal fees, reinstatement of all my benefits, and financial recompense for a reputable high. Legislative immunity, 931-1 annotated, the bottom of the law states, "You cannot be held immune for acts or omissions not in good faith," or for any malicious, willful, wanton, reckless, or grossly negligent acts or omissions. Passing an ordinance like the mayor is proposing--
Excuse me, Captain Barber?
Yes.
You've spoken for 12 minutes. That's four minutes for each of the people. Raise their hands.
I've got a half a page.
Please finish up.
I will. I'll do that right now. Remember the Pracchini Rule? You could fall under that legislative immunity exclusion. Consider the moral obligation. Governor Chiefi mentioned the moral obligation of 38 studios and $75 million. The taxpayers don't have to pay that, but he said, "We're under moral obligation because it's in the contract with the EDC." What about the moral obligation for the retirees? If the mayor gets these concessions, where will the money go? The general fund or the pension fund? If I have to fight, finally, if I have to fight, I'll fight with everything at my disposal. I will fight for my dignity and quality of life. That is worth the fight. Even if I wanted to help, I can't. I can't open my contract. I will fight so I don't lose everything. There is no choice. Come what may, any retaliation because of this talk tonight, come what may, as for me, I will stand and I will fight. Failure is not an option. Thank you for your patience and your time.
I'd like to introduce myself, and I think, swearing before this council, I don't think I have done that in the past. My name is Stephen Pills. I am chairperson of Cranston Conservation Commission. I am a registered advisor landscape architect. My registration number is 184. I've been practicing this profession for 30 years. I've contacted you, Counsel President, on two matters I'd like to bring before the council, and they were two matters that were brought to the attention of the commission. They are DEM notices that were sent to the commission. And the first is Rhode Island DEM application number 12-0192 at the address of, I'm calling it Zero because it is a vacant lot, Briarbrook Lane in Cranston, Rhode Island. We, the commission reviewed plans and discussed this project at our February 26 meeting, and through that discussion and evaluation of the advocates' plans, and as well as a site visit performed on the site by myself, we realized that 90% of this site is comprised of wetland, a swamp of wetland, and a perimeter 50-foot wetland. It poses a severe restriction on this site for residential lot development. The soils on this lot as well as identified in Rhode Island General Soil Map as being ridge berry, whitman, and licester-type soils typically are very poorly drained or severely poorly drained and are not suitable for development. The location of this site on Briarbrook Lane is at its lowest-most point. As you approach this lot from Situate Avenue, you drive down in elevation to reach this lot, which is at its lowest point on Briarbrook Drive. To the west of this lot is a large swamp wetland. We evaluated this project quite a bit, and as it is painful to recommend a disapproval to this council in light of the homeowners wanting to build on this site, we feel as it is not suitable. The commission did reply to DEM with a disapproval vote, and we did send a letter to Counsel President, also urging consideration of the council to consider this information and also render this approval for the project. The 45-day response period, the public concern and comment period for DEM has ended. The commission did issue a letter within that 45-day period. The commission does not have authority to approve. We are simply advisory to the council. So that is the purpose for this presentation on this project, and I'd like to allow response and then go on to the next project if I could.
You have a couple more minutes. It's a four-minute time slot on this. Counsel, Nocito, you have a question?
Yeah, I don't understand why, I mean, planning ultimately rules on this, or zoning does, correct? That's where their report goes to? Am I correct?
Yeah, it usually goes to planning. You make your recommendations to the planning commission?
Yeah, well, the planning commission say. I don't understand, you know, you made your recommendations to planning, and planning would make the recommendation, and unless somebody has petitioned for some sort of zoning change, you know, the process is set up so that those governmental bodies handle the decisions.
The matter came before the commission by DEM. If you're advising the commission at this point to bring this to the attention of the planning board?
Normally, what would you do? Explain the process to this council. You're an advisory commission, committee, and who do you make your recommendations to?
Typically, they would be made to the Development Plan Review Meeting to Peter Lapola. This matter did not go to that committee, as far as I know.
Through the chair. Both of these applications, the notification from DEM when they were received in my office were placed before the council. Both of these applications were on your January docket under miscellaneous business, and the council had the opportunity to take it up at that time. They were listed before you. I had emailed the council prior to the meeting.
All right, so this was all heard in January? Am I correct?
It was on your docket in January. That's correct.
I don't remember any discussion concerning it in January. Mr. Corden, you're up there for a reason.
Yes, sir, thank you. I just thought I might shed a little light on the process. This project was brought before the Development Project Review Committee, which is the Planning Department, and they did review the project. They did not review the wetlands. They reviewed the project and found no problem with it, and they put a condition on it that, assuming that DEM did approve the permit, there was no reason why not to go ahead. So we left the decision with DEM.
I do understand that the DEM issues a permit. I believe the ultimate power of approval lies with this council as to what is approved or denied in the city. So while I do respect DEM, I believe that there is opportunity for consideration by this council. And if the council finds it just to have further discussion with the Planning Department, I'm open to that as well.
I think I'm going to refer this to Public Works and let them look into this. That's as far as the process, because it seems that for some reason, we're not getting all the information that we should be getting. And I don't know if it's, you know, just because it's, if you're talking to the Planning Commission and the Planning Commission or DEM saying it's okay, and you're saying it's not okay, and we're not aware of the situation. Therefore, I'm going to recommend that we, I'm going to tell the city clerk, put this in the Public Works Committee and have Council Chairman Nocito look into this and see if we can come to some kind of a compromise. Would you approve, Mr. Pills?
Yes, if I may add--
Yes, continue.
This street was Imperial Estates, recorded in 1988. The first home built was in 1989. Wetlands, Freshwater Wetlands Act, Rhode Island DEM, came into play in 1998. The last home built on this street was 2004. Again, and the commission considers it unfortunate for this homeowner to now have this lot with such a restrictive well-in condition on it, so I'll end with that. Rhode Island DEM application, OCTA 12-029.
Before you continue, you were allowed four minutes. It's six and a half, it's only seven minutes now, and we're going to refer this whole thing to Public Works. Is it possible that you can give your entire presentation to Public Works Committee?
Yes, it is.
All right, thank you on that. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Counsel President.
Tony Libertori on the undocated, are you here?
I've already spoken. I thought it was a lot--
Oh, okay. Anybody else would like to speak on any undocumented item? Please come forward, give your name and address. Please come forward, give your name and address to the record, please.
I'm here on behalf of Mr. Frank Monte, the owner of the lot on Zero Briarbrook Lane, which this gentleman just spoke about. It's the last lot--
Yeah, you need an address for the record, please.
Nelson Andrews 16 Long Court, Cranston, Rhode Island.
Okay.
It's the last lot in the neighborhood. The property value has gone up dramatically over the years, so has in the taxes. Mr. Monte could not comprehend why he is not being allowed to build on the lot. He feels very strongly that he should have that right. He's paid for the property, and he's paid the taxes on the property every year. We do not understand how this one last lot is going to affect the wetlands so dramatically. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else would like to speak on any undocumented item? Hearing none. The undocumented portion of this council meeting is now closed. Election of city officials. Tax Assessment Board of Review, Neil Ampel. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion made in second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please take the roll.
Yes.
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 Our Flood Committee, reappearance of Brian Dupont, Michael Bean, Matthew Papino, and Amy Sinai.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion made in second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please take the roll.
Counsel, please.
Yes.
Counsel, Sykes.
Yes.
Counsel, Bob.
Yes.
Counsel, Seado.
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 Yes. Appointments to the Flood Commission, also Senator Franklin Badi, Representative Joe McNamara, and also a member of the minority party in the Cranston City Council who have volunteered. Counsel, move to the record here.
Thank you, Counsel President. I volunteered, I spoke to Counsel Manbotz, but I offered to volunteer to serve on this committee.
Good, we need a good lawyer there. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Second. Any discussion? Yes, Counsel President. Yes, Commissioner McHale. Flood Chairman welcomes, and we look forward to having Counsel Mr. Vekia on the commission.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please take the roll.
Counsel, please.
Yes.
Counsel, Sykes.
Yes.
Counsel, Bob.
Yes.
Counsel, Seado.
Yes.
Counsel, Seado.
Yes.
Not sure if I should vote, but--
Yes.
Yes. Juvenile humans or Mary Jo Haines, reappointed to fill the unexpired term of Mrs. Gilkinson.
Motion to approve.
Motion made in second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please take the roll.
Counsel, please.
Yes.
Counsel, Sykes.
Yes.
Counsel, Bob.
Yes.
Counsel, Seado.
Yes.
Counsel, Seado.
Yes.
Counsel, Seado.
Yes.
Counsel, Seado.
Yes. Yes. Report of city offices. Are there any reports?
I have none.
A report on hiring a special counsel, consultants, et cetera, pursuant to charter, Section 15.05. Mr. Corden? Mr. Cordy?
Thank you, Council President. Cranston Fire Department Deputy Chief Steven McIntosh has requested to be continued in service. Deputy Chief McIntosh has met all the necessary requirements. We urge you to support this request.
Motion to approve?
Motion made to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilman Lee?
Yes.
Pass Stychos?
Yes.
Pass Bob?
Yes.
Pass Nakal?
Yes.
Pass Asito?
Yes.
Pass Andrea?
Yes.
Yes. Resolution 2012-13, supporting the creation expansion of outdoor space or creation of city parks in the mayor's quarterly report to the administration. Is any update on this matter?
With all due respect, Councilman Stychos may want to address his latest proposal on the property next to the Audubon.
Well, we did, we had a meeting, Peter Lapola, the planning director, and me, and a representative of the Audubon Society about the possibility of a walking trail on city property that runs between Late and Night Road and Hope Road and the adjacent Audubon property. So we're working on that as a possibility, but there's really nothing definite to report other than Audubon is considering the possibility of offering the land on a lease to the city in order to build a hiking trail.
Okay, thank you, Councilman. Claims settled by the solicitor's office. Daniel Maria Majacomo, $5,000 of water damage, Progressive Insurance, and Figueroa Romano for $2,800 for vehicle damage. Any questions concerning this in the council? All right, council president communications. Since January when I first took office, so the biggest problem facing the city of Cranston is the unfunded pension liabilities. Over $300 million. To come up with that kind of money to straighten it out immediately and give everybody the money that's due them would bankrupt this city. To pay it off within ten years would bankrupt this city. We have to come to some kind of agreement. I know the mayor's office is working with members of the unions to try to come up with a settlement. I hope and pray for success in this matter, because without cooperation and without a compromise, the taxpayers of this city will no longer be able to live here. Taxes would be way, way too high. So for everybody's best interest, let's try to work together to solve this problem. Thank you. Council member communications. Do any members of the council like to speak on anything? It's Councilman San Maria.
Thank you, Council President. I was wondering through the administration if I could get an update on the businesses on Fletcher Avenue. Have we got any more businesses that have signed off on the DEM permitting process, or are we still at the same number? And I don't need that information tonight. You can get it to me. And also, Joe, while I have you up there, at the bottom of Oxbridge on Cranston Street, there's a bus stop, and there's advertising on the side of the bus stop. A few constituents have called. When they get to the bottom of Oxbridge, looking left towards the rotary, they can't see oncoming traffic. And especially when the snow was here, they had to go even farther and encroach out onto Cranston Street. Is there any way we can get Ripta to at least make one side of that clear glass so they can see that the cars coming down? There have been accidents there over the years. But I drive down that street a lot, and you do have to poke out to see the oncoming traffic.
Through the chair. Yes, Mr. Cordy. Two councilmen, San Maria, give me that intersection.
The bottom of Oxbridge, where it hits Cranston Street, across the Knightsville Library, there's a Ripta bus stop there. And I know they have to have advertisement to survive, but it's blocking that sight view. If I could have that information for the next council meeting is fine.
We're looking for it.
Thank you. Thank you, Council President.
Attorney Leader Akado.
Thank you, Council President. I have just two communications. First, from a constituent, Laura Almagno of Millwood Avenue, has an issue with waste haulers of Johnston. Evidently, they're removing the bins at Spain's Taco Bell scramblers at 4:30, 5:00 in the morning. So I would refer that to the Safety Services Committee next meeting. We can discuss that. And the second-
We have a big topic, that's a big topic on safety services lately, so we'll just add it to the mix.
And the next is, I know the council doesn't have any jurisdiction, but the uneventful tragedy there at the Pecasset Cemetery, I just wanted to address the administration. Even though Pecasset Cemetery is a private-owned cemetery, is there any way the administration can make any words as to contacting the owners and having them install a lock gate such as is at Zane Cemetery? Because what happened a couple of days ago, we really don't want undesirable elements frequenting that cemetery. So that's a question to the administration through the chair, Council President.
Can someone in the administration address that question?
All I can suggest at this point is we will look into it. I don't know how much authority we're going to have with private property, but maybe from a life safety standpoint, but I will get back to you.
Thank you.
That's it. Thank you, Council President. Councilman Botts?
I just have one item. Over the weekend, a constituent contacted me regarding a garbage issue at a business in Ward Two, and I would just like to commend Stanley Pykel for acting very quickly on that matter. He sent people out today to address the issue, and, you know, I'd just like to pass on a word of good news that happens in the city every now and then. Not that the garbage was overflowing, but that they acted quickly on it, so.
Councilman Vivek here. Do you have your hand up?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Council President. Just one quick thing as well, kind of a follow-up to Councilman Botts. I had a constituent call me today, actually, and Mr. Pykel had handled something for me with regard to the issues that we had last year, and enforcement issues. And there's a boarded-up house on Capuano Drive in Garden City. And I had spoken to Mr. Pykel, and they had actually brought an action before the municipal court, and a very hefty fine was levied against the property. It's bank-owned, and the bank has, you know, has not sent anyone to appear in court, but there's a hefty fine in many thousands of dollars that has been levied on that property. I'm going to speak to Mr. Pykel tomorrow to see what else we can do to move it along, but at some point, we'll get the bank's attention. But that process has begun. We'll have to see what we can do with it.
Any other members of the council like to make any comments? Hearing none, we'll move on. Or is there any other business?
There is none.
Introduction of new business. Is there any new business?
We have proposed ordinance three dash thirteen dash one, an amendment to Title 10 of Chapter 32 of the Code of the City of Cranston, entitled Demoted Vehicles and Traffic, for Ashley and Hazelton, to be referred to the ordinance committee for a hearing on April 11th. We have proposed ordinance three dash thirteen dash two, for an amendment of Title 12 of the Code of the City of Cranston, entitled Streets, Sidewalks, and Public Places, to do with snow removal for residential areas, to be referred to Public Works for a hearing on April 1st. We have proposed ordinance three dash thirteen dash three, an amendment of Title 12 of the Code of the City of Cranston, 2005, entitled Streets and Sidewalks and Public Places, Snow Removal for Business Properties, to be referred to Public Works for a hearing on April 1st. We have proposed ordinance three dash thirteen dash oh four, an amendment of Title 2.20.050 of the Code of the City of Cranston, entitled Police Pension Fund, Retirement from Service, Offices or Members Hired Prior to July 1, 1995, to be referred to the Finance Committee for a hearing on April 11th. Proposed ordinance three dash thirteen dash oh five, an amendment of Title 2.28.050 of the Code of the City of Cranston, 2005, entitled Fireman's Pension Fund, Retirement from Service, for Members Hired Prior to July 1, 1995, to be referred to the Finance Committee for a hearing on April 11th. Proposed ordinance three dash thirteen dash oh six, an amendment of Title 3 of the Code of the City of Cranston, entitled Revenue and Finance, Capital Budget for Paying Funds Allocation, to be referred to Finance Committee for a hearing on April 11th. Proposed ordinance three dash thirteen dash seven, an amendment of Title 3.68 of the Code of the City of Cranston, entitled Revenue and Finance, Tax Incentive Repeal for Catherine Gibbs, to be referred to the Finance Committee for a hearing on April 11th. Proposed ordinance three dash thirteen dash oh eight, an amendment of Title 3.76 of the Code of the City of Cranston, entitled Revenue and Finance, Tax Incentive Repeal for Automotive Dealerships, to be referred to the Finance Committee for a hearing on April 11th. We have the following resolutions. Resolution of the city council encouraging the Rhode Island General Assembly to eliminate single-party voting by means of a single mark on a ballot, to be referred to the ordinance committee for a hearing on April 11th. We have resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into and approving a memorandum of agreement with the Rhode Island Department of Transportation for reimbursement for police details, to be referred to the Finance Committee for a hearing on April 11th. We have resolution in support of clarifying the right of city council members to forward constituent concerns, complaints, and requests for information to city department heads, to be referred to the ordinance committee for a hearing on April 11th. We have a national grid poleocation request for Lark Avenue. This is a joint poleocation with Verizon, to be referred to the Public Works Committee for a hearing on April 1st. We have the following new claims to be referred to the Claims Committee for a hearing on April 1st. These are all property damage claims. Robert Hannan from an alleged incident on March 19, 2013. Joseph Jones from alleged incident from the September storm. Joseph Simone from alleged incident on February 17, 2013. Leon Hill from alleged incident on January 16, 2013. Maria Alma from alleged incident on March 7, 2013. James Massey from alleged incident on February 13, 2013. Tracy Hughes from alleged incident on January 31, 2013. Michael Mancini from alleged incident on February 20, 2013. Robert Di Nogro from alleged incident on February 11, 2013. A property damage subrogation claim from Government Employees Insurance on behalf of their insured Gwendolyn and Felipe Vargas from alleged incident on September 7, 2012. And then the following, our personal injury claims of Karen E. Gilbo from alleged incident in October of 2010. Charlie Perizia from alleged incident on February 17, 2013. And Maria Alonso and Mercimo Guro from alleged incident on February 28, 2013. That's all I have.
Thank you. Is there a motion to refer all matters as read by the city clerk? Motion made second. Any discussion concerning the motions? Hearing none. Clerk, please take the roll.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Yes. Mr. Speaker, his business on the clerk's desk. Solicitor Kirshenbaum, you have an update on the status of the suit ordinance that's listed?
The results of, I got an email from the engineers. The final report is in legal counsel with DEM, and I should have an update on that shortly.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion concerning this? Hearing none. Thank you, Mr. Kirshenbaum. This information, further with no further action on this. A resolution in support of legislation to allow the city to use income criteria in determining whether to agree property tax relief. The matter failed with the Finance Committee. This was a proposed ordinance, a resolution that did fail in the Finance Committee. The city council's next regular meeting will be held on Monday, April 22nd. Entertainer motion to adjourn. So moved. Motion made second. All in favor? We are now adjourned.